Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Any who's? Okay. First item for discussion is elementary school redistricting potential scenarios. Mr. White, what am I missing?
Good evening. Hi there. Here tonight to present scenario lime and scenario purple and then we'll go over the next steps and the back process.
Didn't we have scenario lime presented last week?
Uh, yes, I'm gonna get into-
And then they made one change to it?
Yes, I'm gonna get into that. So you can see the original scenario lime on the left and then there's scenario lime with this superscript, which was the change made back last week by the school board. On the right-hand side, if you look at that box on the right-hand side, that red box, that identifies two planning units, planning unit 157 and 157.2, that were assigned back to Conway Elementary initially, they were assigned to Berry Farm. And one of those planning units is a park, so there are no students, the other has a few students.
Did we talk, so I believe, I know that as Randall said at the meeting, at our last meeting, that transportation was okay with that, but just for the record, that's, you know, on everything else, we said that that was okay?
Yes, transportation had a chance to look at it, they said it was fine.
Okay.
They actually said they preferred it.
Okay, so there's no significant change to the demographics or the capacity utilization at either school with the new line. In terms of, so with regard to seating space at our existing schools, it's the same, where we have zero schools over 100% capacity as the other scenarios. Out in 2020 and 2030, there'll be three schools slated to be above 100% capacity. And then the schools in the outlined areas, Falmouth, Garrisonville, Gratham Village, Rock Hill, are all slated to be 82% utilized or higher. With regard to ES 18 and 19, they're both slated to open in the low 90% utilization. With regards to their pre-reduced lunch, they'll be around 51% for both ES 18 and 19. ELL is slightly higher, ES 19 at 24%, whereas ES 18 is slated to be 17%. And both have sped, population estimated to be 15% when the school opens in 2026. Okay, so what we have here is a chart that shows all of the scenarios that have been developed. And of course, all these scenarios have been developed with community input and schoolwork feedback as well. So if we look at, I'll just focus on scenario lime and then scenario lime with the superscript 1 up next to it. That's the latest scenario. So if you take a look at Conway and if you take a look at Berry Farm in 2026, you see it's a very insignificant change, it goes from 79% to 81% and vice versa. So there's a 2% flip-flop with this change. And then we go out to 2028, the same thing, same thing plays out in 2030, where both schools are slated to be like 86% capacity, so they're both fairly balanced. All right. All right, so we wanna go down. Into the demographics, yes, that's fine, thank you. So looking at the demographics, again, it's very insignificant changes, like 1%, 2%, nothing. Make a significant change at each school. Just scroll down, I don't know why. Okay, and then for those of you interested in the raw numbers, I've just added the raw numbers. So that you can see for each school, the projected number of students. And those of you interested in doing the math yourself at home, you have the ability to do that. All right. And then as well, we've added the projected demographics, just the raw numbers. So in all transparency, you have all the data that the staff has access to create these numbers. So you can verify them yourselves if you'd like to. Okay, with regard to the reassignment plan, in 2026, it's pretty much the same as scenario lime. The only difference being Conway and Berry Farm is they shift to 15 students. So now Conway is at 707 students, that's the projection for 2026. And Berry Farm is projected to be 561 students. And then you can see where the students are coming from. Below the green highlighted areas, those show you the ascending schools. All right, all right, so-
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
Could you go back? So like for example, Winding Creek, I know that the portion of this scenario are students that... So original redistricting, there were students that were currently at Winding Creek that were assigned to either Staffordale or 19. Are these students that are actually in Staffordale right now? Or are these students that in scenario green were in Staffordale? Do you know what I mean? Like, are there some-
Coming over to Winding Creek and they're staying at Winding Creek.
That's what I'm trying to figure out, those 34 that are-
So those 34 that are Staffordale, they're moving from Staffordale to one-
They're moving to Winding Creek.
So they're currently in Staffordale today, it's not like we moved them one place and we're moving them another place or back and forth.
These are all from today to the new school that they're going to.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
We haven't moved anybody into Staffordale for years because it's been overcrowded for years.
Right, and these kids are coming from Staffordale, but I wasn't sure if it was-
Yeah, we're away from the lime comparisons or anything else at this point.
Okay.
All right, so now we have scenario purple. And so if you look on the left-hand side of the screen, you see our current boundaries. And you look on the right-hand side of the screen, you see scenario purple and you're able to see sort of the changes. Very high level there. All right, so our transportation department, they took a look at scenario purple and there are some similarities, because of course, in the current boundaries, there's an island. Scenario purple, the same thing stays in place. So there aren't any significant changes with regard to that in terms of any changes to any inefficiencies or anything like that. So it's pretty much no significant change. Some of the key highlights to scenario purple, zero schools over 100% capacity, just like all the other scenarios. Each school is slated to be over 100% in 2030, just like all the other scenarios. In this scenario however, Rocky Run is slated to be 72% full in 2030. And all that has to do with which students are being reassigned. With regard to ES 18, it opens at 82% utilization and will remain below 90% capacity through 2030. Of course, ES 18 is gonna help relieve crowding once, will help relieve, alleviate future growth from the Westlake development and it will also relieve others crowding in the southern part of the county. With regards to demographics, pre-reduced lunch, ELL and sped are very similar for ES 18 with all the other scenarios. Same thing with ES 19, very similar, no significant changes. All right, so now we have the raw number of students here, showing you by scenario. So we see, for example, in ES 18, at ES 18, we have... There, what is that, is that 9?
980.
980.
878.
And 878, so this, you know, subtle change at ES 18. And you can see how that plays out for all 19 schools by year, starting with 2026 all the way up to 2030. And here we have the raw number of students in terms of demographics for each school. All right. All right, thank you. So here we are, the reassignment plan for scenario purple, shows you the number of students and where they're coming from. All right, so... Did you have any questions about the reassignment plan or the...
I can't find the percentages.
Oh, for purple, am I missing it? I can see the numbers clearly, but what's the percentage?
You know, I think that, oh, okay.
Right?
What, you mean in populations?
Yeah, my percentage is full, I can see the numbers, but I just wanna see the percentages.
Just the percentages instead of-
Yes.
Are they not so safe? You'd have to-
Uh, it's a lot of calculators.
Well, no.
I was assuming I didn't know how to run it.
Is your button, we can push on this button, that we can get percentages?
Yes, we will share, let me see, someone go back.
Um, let's see. I think they were in the bulletin.
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought so too, I know, I saw them.
Yes, it is in the bulletin and that is an attachment, I apologize for that.
No, no stress.
What does transportation say about that?
I can't make deal with numbers, I just was curious. I mean, I know I saw them.
Did they have a preference, Susan said they had a preference in the line amended.
Yeah, they lined mine, they thought it was just as close. With this one, no significant change than what's currently in.
Right, but it's, what is preferred, this is, I mean, we created that island-
Yeah, I didn't get it from-
Because Conway had the room and there was no room on Rocky Run. I mean, that, that, it wasn't ideal, but that was the only place to move the students, that there was room. So my question is, why would we do a redistricting? And in essence, since we started with a clean slate, create an island? And that's a board question that we can talk about.
I'm curious in terms of transportation, whether transportation weighed in on the changes to Rocky Run's boundary. So in scenario lime, there are a bunch of kids who have to be transported across 17, whereas in scenario purple, those kids don't get transported across 17.
How did they know if they're transferred off of the?
So take a look at, you see, you see how it's in scenario lime, Rocky Run?
Well, this is lime, yeah.
Yeah, so show purple.
Can we put lime on one side and purple on the other side so we can look at them?
Okay, 'cause in purple, it looks like-
For the amended lime.
ES 18 is just the north side of 17.
Right, right. And so I would imagine that for transportation, not having to cross 17 to take elementary school kids would be preferred for that. I don't know where they would be in other parts, but-
So it's harder to cross 17 than to go down 17 to Route 1 and cross Route 1 and then go up to-
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, I'm just pointing out that there is that difference. Does that make sense?
No.
And we didn't address it specifically with them during this round, but in the previous rounds when we talked about that, that was an area and they said, hey, we, you know, we prefer them to go to Rocky Run, but realize we have to balance everything. And so some of those students, it's not a designated walking area, but some of them still can walk 'cause it's disconnected from the neighborhood. You have to, by car, you have to go around, but they can cut through woods to get there. So some of them still do that.
But they won't be walking across 17 to get to ES 18.
Right, they will not be.
But that's just-
Oh.
So they pointed that out during their initial review of our, 'cause multiple scenarios had them-
No, okay.
The other thing is, is the current, you have to redistrict this section.
Similar to the lime.
So with how far, were you talking about just crossing 17? I know it's, I'm trying to fix it, 'cause I go up and down 17 a lot.
Right there, see, there's two little sections right there.
So here, so this red dot is ES 18. Now, and this is Rocky Run.
And there's a population of it.
So these students right now go to Rocky Run, but now they'll have to take a bus or car across Route 17 and go down Stafford Plaza Drive to get to ES 18.
Okay.
So the other thing is, is that once we finish the rebuild of Hartwood, all these schools down here are gonna have to be redistricted. So maybe it would be best to be least disruptive there in this redistricting, because I don't wanna move students a couple times.
Well, we don't know when we're gonna get Hartwood rebuilt
Well, I mean, we couldn't get what the high school there.
And we don't know how many seats we're actually gonna have depending on the growth that comes in. That would be my concern, you know, we're not adding, it's not like adding a new school with 1,000 plus seats.
Hartwood was just approved, right? So we are-
It's on the CIP.
Right, and I have-
We've had things on the CIP before.
Right, I have-
They were approved that-
I have board, I have supervisors saying to me, maybe Drew will open in FY 28. It depends on steel prices and aluminum and all of that, so-
So just like, I'm not passing, I'm literally not passing any judgment, but...
Right.
So we could literally have a half-built school sitting around because of, I mean, oh my gosh.
I think it'll depend on when the bids are.
That's not, but to the atmosphere.
I think once they start, that once they start building, that we'll have to finish, 'cause we'll sign a contract.
Right, right.
But the issue is when we're going to start. And that's because if you look at the CIP over the years, we've had, you know, buildings.
In the last three?
High School 6 has been on the CIP for a long, long time.
I remember the land selection took a long time for that one though.
But it didn't get built.
All approval to do that construction.
Well, it wasn't the selection, it was the negotiation. And so I think, I think that's a difference between lime and purple is if, if all this crowding, and I don't know whether it'll happen, I don't, Westlake hasn't even started yet, so I don't know if that's a real concern or not. But the purple plan leaves room in ES 18 and in Hartwood, and Rocky Run, should we need to move students into there. Or if we lose a school like Hartwood as a catastrophic failure or Rising Star is a catastrophic failure, we now have some room in the south part of the county to move some students over.
I guess, I guess I'm a little curious, because when we last left, everyone other than, everyone was fine with lime except for the 10 students that I asked for, that was the only upset part. And the comment made was, that's fine, I'm gonna go in and put a scenario that doesn't include that, was your word.
No, no, that included other people who wanted to stay at Conway.
What you said, it doesn't include that, is what you said in the meeting. But in any case-
No, no, she said-
I'm talking, but any case, this scenario has 374 of George Washington students-
Right.
Put into a scenario. And once again, just like when lime was created, everyone is called and talked to by the two of you and this time again, everyone is talked to except for me. And I guess I'm just curious as to, when you went in to do purple, what was your thought?
So my thoughts were, when those areas were moved into Conway in the last big redistricting, there was a lot of concern about students from Old Forge being moved out of Rocky Run into Conway. What I'm concerned about is that we're gonna do the same thing again. That we're gonna move them into Rocky Run and then we're gonna have something go wrong in terms of out in the western end of the county and suddenly we're gonna move them back into Conway to make room in Rocky Run to take kids from Hartwood at that point. And so I'd rather move them once than twice. But that may, that may not happen, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just-
And let me just say, I will totally defer to you on this, because these are your constituents, right?
Thank you.
Yep.
But I guess I'm, I don't know, was that a problem? Hartwood, was that a problem that we are really concerned with? Not making it until the opening date? 'Cause in our discussions, we never talked about, oh, let's, you know, make sure that we have an option. 'Cause if that's the case, I mean, we gotta make sure, the same thing for Drew. Do we need to redistrict? And, you know, make room in whatever buildings for Drew. I mean, I just don't know that that's what our, one of our goals was to do. I definitely hear what you're saying. I definitely feel it, I mean, go into Drew, go into Hartwood, it's concerning. I just, you know, we kind of shunned away from that when we did the high school redistricting, because we didn't, originally, Mr. White had put extraordinary numbers at Brookpoint in the outline years, extraordinary numbers at North, and we were like, ah, but those schools are probably not the ones who can handle it. And that bringing on a new high school anyways, if we have to make the shift, we make the shift. And high school's a little bit different because of the fact that we have these learning specialty centers, you know, so kids may not even go to their districted ones. And elementary, obviously, they will go to theirs. But I just didn't, I totally see what you're saying, I hear what you're saying about consideration of Hartwood. I just didn't feel like we as a board had commented or-
Well, I think that's the conversation now, right?
Now, yeah, but just after a public hearing, I just feel like it's, you know, kinda hard to have it come out now, after public hearing, to say, this is a consideration in case Hartwood doesn't make it.
Well, the system's also changed too, because now we have tariffs that may affect steel imports, we have other things.
Not in one week.
They're on pause, they're on pause, right? Not today.
Okay, so we, I, so, so hold on.
But no, my point is, right now, the county is concerned about funding. We don't know what the federal government's gonna do, we don't, things could change. There's a lot of change around the lines.
They could also get better, so we can also have our glass half-full at this point as well. It's a choice that we have to make. We can either choose, look at every situation as the sky is falling or we can start to have to look at the things that we have a job to do regardless of what happens and that job needs to get done. For me, the problem with purple is that is an extreme change, not just a small one. It's a very extreme change to families that came out, like, didn't have, it's like, and once again, we're not giving them a chance to react to something that's incredibly huge. Now, most of my constituents, a small part of my constituents are affected. So I have two questions. One, are the folks that came and asked to stay in Conway still in Conway and purple?
Yes.
There's one, was there more than one question?
All right, just 'cause I get confused.
Old Forge, no, what was it, Repahanic Landing? How many students are in Repahanic Landing?
A couple hundred.
A couple hundred, so one person came on that subdivision and asked to stay. Did we get, did anybody get anything from anybody else in Repahanic Landing? I don't recall seeing anything, but-
I think, I think-
No, I just wanted to, just to clarify in terms of-
No, no, I agree, I think the issue I have, actually, issue-
No, no, I'm just asking for the folks, the one community that Susan was worried about, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to clarify, because my brain has a very hard time trying to figure out what the numbers are with the colors, with the changes, with the whatever, I'm not, you know, all that adept at it. So the folks, the 10 folks or whatever, 15 folks that Susan asked to stay at Conway in purple, are they in?
Yep.
Okay, that's one question. The second question is, why is the Falmouth Elementary School so big after... Of course, that's how it presents on a map, right?
It currently is almost that footprint of, currently.
Okay, so, but, no, right, well, these two-
Yeah, on the left.
Okay, okay, but I thought we were trying to also decompress Falmouth, because the age of that building, that's matter.
And it, and it's still, it still is, because that little bit of pale light blue there
See, everything's the left, to the left, to 95.
Has a teeny number of children in there.
Okay, so that's-
And so, I'm sure, oh, no.
Sitting at, I mean, sitting at-
I think that-
Elementary School 18. Elementary 18, okay.
This is what's good.
Oh, thank you, okay, and, do people, apparently more stuff that's gonna confuse me, I'm sorry. Um, okay, so I just wanna go on record about Hartwood is also saying, of course, I'm the one most concerned about, not, I mean, we're all concerned. But we also have a thousand trailers that we paid for, that at the bottom, I mean, I hate to say it, but we've already asked what would happen if we had to put up a campus of trailers, which given, it's not, I know it's not optimal and don't kill me for saying it out loud, but I've already said it out loud before you got here. But at the end of the day, that's also something, so I just wanna see us making reasonable decisions, not based on whether-
You said it a couple years ago.
I did, I absolutely did, I asked finance, I asked Fatsy to look at it.
I think it's funny, and things go around in this purple. You did, she actually said that a couple years ago, and we didn't have any then.
That's correct, so, but anyway, my point is, is that I wanna make the right decision, not a decision based on what may, 'cause we can sit here all day and do what if, what if, what if, if this, if that, and then I can go home and I can be underwater thinking, we're never gonna fix this, or I have the option to sit here and say, this is what works better.
Right.
So now I know how to look at it.
Right, and so, so one of the concerns for me too is-
This is what you want.
Yeah, I'm gonna look at it now, but-
Look at this bottom where it says how to read this chart.
No, I know how to read it.
No, but no, it tells you how many students are going to be there.
Yeah, the other thing is, oh, I see, all right, got it, yes, yes, yes.
I'm wondering why these some people are actually listening.
Hold on, hold on, let me get her answer right.
Sarah, Dr. Chase wasn't talking.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah.
That's okay. So my concern is this Old Forge neighborhood, which is incredibly vulnerable, and they don't show up. Partly because they may not have a vehicle to drive here, they may not have a computer to-
And it's a transient neighborhood.
And it's a transient neighborhood. And I can remember at the last redistricting, going into the neighborhood, talking to people, they were like, yes, we wanna stay where we were, but they're not gonna come here and tell us that they wanna stay, right? So I think arguing that it has to do with how many people talk to us all the time may underestimate for some neighborhoods versus other neighborhoods.
I was talking about Repahanic Landing, which is not the same.
Right, right, right. So, so, and let me, let me continue. So my concern is just, absolutely, if we wanna plan that, that we wanna go with lime, what I would beg of this board is that if things, you know, if we have to do the hauling sewer and shut down Hartwood and put those kids somewhere else, that we aren't going to move Old Forge again. That we're gonna say, Old Forge gets to stay at Rocky Run and Hartwood can go to Margaret Brent or Hartwood could go into ES 18, but we're not gonna push those kids again out of that school. We can move them if we, that's my concern.
But you know, we can't commit another board, you do, all people are bigger along the option, no, we can't promise it.
Please, can I ask?
I know we can, but, but I'm looking at the people who are here.
But, but for clarification, so I thought Old Forge wanted to stay at Conway.
They do. But in lime, they're at Rocky Run.
Mine, they're at Rocky Run.
Have they communicated, and I, I get that there's not a lot of communicators there, but why are we saying that they want to stay? Susan, they're your constituents, right?
Yes.
Have they, have you had any contact with Old Forge about wanting to stay?
I have not reached into, I've walked through Old Forge since I ran. I went in there then, went to deliver Thanksgiving gifts. But no, that's not the conversation. I don't disagree with what Dr. Chase is saying about move and then move, it is a vulnerable population and what have you.
Yeah, hold on.
But I will also say, similar to what I told the families that were talking to me and considering it's only 10 kids, it's almost all the families. But the thing that was, I made sure was clear, is the principal is leaving, there's a big redistricting and teachers may leave also because, you know, either to go to 18 or 19, whatever. There's just gonna be some shifting. So it's not gonna look like same old, same old Conway, is this still what you want? And the answer was yes.
Right.
So, I mean, 'cause in the beginning, I was like, ah, I don't know, I don't know. And you did a lot of shifting in that first meeting with me. And then I know you and Dr. Warner shifted people in your own meeting, but that was in a different section.
Well, they all did. Right.
And then, you know, you've done purple. And, you know, in all scenarios, it doesn't look the same. So as it is as the school they wanna go to. So I, like I said, I wouldn't advocate for them without having made that comment with them and then they still said yes, and that's why I advocated for them.
Well, Dr. Chase, you and I have had the conversation, I am not, as we witnessed, not a fan of dominoing kids for space. I did, you know, I know we've talked about moving kids from, like yours, or less, from Hartwood to Brent before. It's not Ms. Halsted's favorite move, but, you know, in an emergency situation, we do have room up at Brent and, you know, it could be that, yeah, all of those are, you know, just based on the neighborhoods that are around Hartwood.
But let's remember, we will hear from many, many parents about the dangerous roads to get from Hartwood to Brent.
Yep.
Oh, yes.
We sure will. And so, we won't hear-
Okay, but this is all hypothetical. I mean, the question is, do we wanna open 18 at 82% and have it under, have it at 90% in what, 2032?
Or it's keep Rocky Run at 72.
You know, my concern with that is, and create an island. But my concern with that is, and we've told people this about Moncur, the newer schools are better equipped to handle, you know, a higher number of students. And Falmouth and Conway, well, Falmouth, that's really old, but Conway is getting old. So, you know, that concerns me as well.
Sort of like newest elementary school, when you move out of Rose, like excluding the old Moncur.
I am.
It is, how old is Conway now, it's been a long time since it was built.
It was built 2005.
Well, 20 years old, that's eight years old.
Yes.
I mean, it's maybe midlife, I guess.
About six maybe, but six right after.
But that's, that's a real question, I think we're looking at. But I go back to transportation and I only know from when I drive, I don't drive a bus. But if I'm coming from 17, where Old Forge is, it seems to me that it would be a lot quicker to go from Old Forge to Rocky Run. Yes, you do have to go across 17, but then you're not going that far as opposed to, and this was one of the issues when we did move them down to Conway, this long commute. You know, it's a much longer commute. And the problem is, it's harder for families to get to the school. And that's, that's why we didn't wanna move them. Nobody wanted to move Old Forge to Conway, but there wasn't anywhere else to put them.
And I think for me-
That was the problem.
Is if Hartwood was not able to be funded in this budget, I might have a very different opinion. I know that we still have a lot of up in the air, but it is funded and when you think about, we just funded FY 26, so it's really like only two years that we have to try to get it, like that gap, right? Like after the redistricting, but before the school is supposed to open.
Now, I will add-
Now, I will add that typical protocol is, is once we're to the point where we're spending money on design and construction, this, we're surprised it does not move projects out. So, we're at that point now, we already have three million dollars appropriated next year for Hartwood, where we're moving into the design phase. So we have our prototype, and now we're designing it for that proper piece of it.
I, I just had, like I said, a supervisor question Drew, and we're much further along with Drew than we are with Hartwood. So, I just, but yes, I, I agree.
That's terrifying.
Anyway, I, I just also wanted to say.
No, I'm, I mean.
We can go all day too, you know?
Yeah. I, I just wanted to say that moving the modulators is an option, except that that is, comes at a huge price.
Yeah.
Since moving four of them, they have to be on it.
But if we're not gonna, if we're moving, but we're not building, then.
But if we have buildings with space, all we have to do is move students.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's all I'm saying.
So, I don't, I don't think, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you, but I do think that I'm not comfortable with opening Rocky Run at seventy-two percent. Don't kill me, Rocky Run, I'm staying out of the crossboard because, you know, it's a big if, and then, you know,
It's staying at seventy-two.
That's, that would probably be one of my biggest issues, is, is, is that piece of it.
Thank you.
Um, so the purple has moved, like, and I know these guys were out in one of the other scenarios and then in again on eighteen or whatever, and.
How many are there there? Isn't that a couple hundred?
I think so, right?
I think it was a couple hundred, the, the two that were blue, one was assigned seventeen.
The ones at the top of that, was like that Stafford Lake area, right?
Yeah, there was a couple hundred, yeah.
Stafford Lake area, yeah.
Eighteen is eight, seventeen is eight.
So, so I, I mean, I don't know, I'm not, I'm just not a fan of the way it, it plays out in my.
Well, it certainly stuff to think about and consider, cause we're not, we're not deciding today.
No, 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 no.
Well, we have to decide what, we'll go forward now.
No, but I, I mean, I get, this has gotta go out now, people to comment on too.
We're not gonna be going with all five, it doesn't work.
I think we're at six now, we have red, orange, yellow, green, lime, and purple.
I know, yeah.
But lime, lime is ten students different than green, I mean, to me, that's the minimum, not even.
From green.
Well, no, it's, it's.
I was gonna say, is everybody?
Lime one is ten students difference, right?
Right.
Um, right.
Yes.
So this is Falmouth.
I, I guess what's throwing me off is, I mean, I think from the beginning of this conversation, this whole section confused me anyway,
Yeah.
just because of how Falmouth kind of looks like it cuts into it.
Yeah.
So it's really hard to visualize this, of course, again, it's like geography, right? Like, it looks like our schools are right next door to each other, and I guess in theory they are, but it, it is really hard to be like, well, why don't all these kids go to Conway, and all these kids go to Falmouth, and then no, nobody's on an island. But then.
But it, it just has to do with where the kids are, right? We saw that behind school first as well.
Right, and the numbers of, right, that's the problem, but that, so, so looking at the maps, that can get very, like, very confusing that way, but.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, I'm just not, I mean, I'm just going on record as saying I'm not comfortable with seventy-two percent across the board at Rocky Run.
Am I reading this right on page twenty? The red boxes are the ones that reassign in purple, so all of these?
Yes.
Yeah.
So that's a, that's a pretty significant.
Oh, look. Purple and lime, this is a change.
Yeah.
Oh, good. These, these are all reassigned.
Right. Right.
A lot of work.
Wow, what work you've done.
I mean, really? The boxes are highlighted.
I mean, all for these crazy, ladies that can't get it. I'm sorry, me, it's just me, I'm only speaking up to you, I'm not the recipient, it's totally me.
Wait, so the red box is what's reassigned in purple?
From.
From, from.
From previous?
From green or, or lime.
From green, okay, cause I was gonna say, but it looks like current values, yeah, so.
From lime. I mean, they're currently going to, a lot of them are currently going to that school, it's just leaving them at that school.
Okay.
Right.
Are written, they're currently, like, in the current, not in the current line.
Right.
Yeah, I, I get, I get, yeah, cause I'm like, but it looks exactly the same, but yes, those are the ones that are being here, okay.
Okay.
It first doesn't.
I'm just gonna, I'm going on record, every time I look at this map, I am shocked at how much of our county love lies outside of our urban services area.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Like, all the Rock Hill Elementary schools are attended, so, right?
No, no, we.
Well, I mean, and that was one of the things.
Can you go further, Wes?
We, oh, but, but we have, um, St. George's, that you can walk through the woods in the back.
To, to Rock Hill? No, I'm just saying that, you know, when you think about, when, you know, Ms. Halsted says, these schools look like they're super close to each other. And it's like.
Yeah.
Cause our urban services are too small. Because we can't go, we're constrained by public utilities. So it, it's, but it's always visible to me on these maps.
I, I will say, and I'm, and I'm going back a bit, um, when I served, uh, first couple years on the CIP advisory as a parent, and they tasked us with where are the students going to go? That was our task, where are the students gonna go when the five elementary schools were renovated? Cause they were all supposed, supposed to be renovated.
Right. Right.
And then, make a decision because Hartwood is right after them. So wherever the five went, then Hartwood was gonna go. And originally, they told us to comment on a trailer campus on the back of where Rising Star is. They told us they were gonna build a trailer campus there. But we were trying to take care of Stafford Elementary, Moncur, Falmouth, Grafton, and Ferry Farm, and then Hartwood. So it wasn't really gonna work for the northern schools. So we tried to come up with something central. And they were going to build a, they were actually talking about closing down Drew, putting them in there. They taught, and then what we found was Stafford Middle School was half empty. And so we were able to occupy half of Stafford Middle with trailers fenced in and a semi-built playground. So we cohabitated an elementary school in Stafford Middle School while Falmouth, Grafton, and Stafford L were renovated. But, just so you, just for context, the whole trailer campus, we didn't have any, was, came then to us as an option for when schools needed to go offline for a full year of renovations.
But they had a, two teams at Stafford Middle, so that was one of.
They did, and the way that they could split their cafeteria made it work as well. And, and they, and they did have, they had two art rooms too.
That was actually a good experience for the kids.
They had two art rooms.
It worked out good for the students at Stafford Middle, had a lot of interaction with the elementarys.
The, the. The principals said it did go very well for them. But then the supervisor said they're rebuilding Moncur, rebuilding Ferry Farm, of which they did one and not the other.
Do we have any other topics, concerns with redistricting?
Is our goal tonight to decide how many we're gonna move forward with, or?
We can, if people, yeah, that's part of the conversation.
But just to talk about it, do we wanna go with the minorities? Does, can we agree we're not gonna have any new scenarios though?
Hmm.
I mean, I think, that's the thing we have to agree on.
No more new scenarios. And I, I think we can eliminate one of the lime ones.
No new scenarios.
So.
Uh-huh.
Um, in, I was gonna say, in, in talking to board members prior to our last board meeting, red was one that people were interested in getting rid of, or at least willing to, you know, that they weren't using, they weren't going to use it. And yellow, orange was still talked about, um, green slash lime.
I think you could just, I think we probably could get rid of green and lime and just have lime one, or whatever the, the second lime is. Can we?
Well, I was just gonna share, I think, our approach, and, and I know Lionel is showing lime and lime and lime one here. Our approach is just, that is just the new lime one is lime.
It's just new lime.
You voted on that change.
Yeah.
It's just on the paper.
That is just, we just wanna show that for comparison purposes today, so, we didn't intend to have two lime.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so that's, you took it out.
Cause you made a vote to clearly put those into lime, so our plan was just to have lime moving forward with that one change.
I think you took it out.
Okay. I think that we've all stopped tinkering or considerations of red, orange, and yellow.
Yeah.
Because I think we did our overlay of changes in green, more subsequent ones were done with lime, and then a completely different, uh, direction with purple. But I think red, orange, and yellow are not in our.
Well, you were the, one of the ones that was interested in orange, I thought.
Orange as a place to start for Ferry Farm, but then that's where green came from.
Okay. But listen, I'm not doing red, orange, or yellow. My character bill district doesn't want any of that.
Yeah.
Maybe I'm getting flashbacks, but, you know.
I'm okay, I'm one with you, I know, I can deal with those three.
Um.
So. I, I, I think we've kind of amended red, orange, and yellow to the point where now they've been supplanted by a.
Yes. Green, lime, and orange.
Right, I'm on that orange, yellow, and purple.
Red, and lime, and green.
So, does that have to be a vote, or can we just agree to not go forward with that?
Right, yeah.
I, I don't know, I mean, do we have to actually vote, could we just pull the board?
Did we?
Yeah, I can ask Ms. Boatright for clarification, but it's my understanding if there's consensus to, or direction for us to not to bring those scenarios forward, then we can do that.
Cause then what happens is we have to notify all those families, so I wanna make sure we do it right.
This is not very. That those are not the options.
Is that Ms., Ms. Boatright, is that right?
Yes.
Just consensus from the board, a direction that we would not bring this?
So we can take it.
So it sounds like.
So I would, I would pull the board though, just so it's clear that.
Okay.
Yep.
On every member's side.
Because if anybody wants to bring them back, I'm all right with bringing them back, I would vote not to, but I don't wanna.
Then they'll just leave it.
Okay, so we're gonna talk about, I'm gonna pull everybody on eliminating our, um, red, orange, and yellow, all three. Uh, Dr. Warner.
Yes.
Dr. Chase.
Yes.
Sky.
Yes.
Ms. Halsted.
Yes.
Yes.
And yes for me, so we'll get rid of those.
And those are Lionel's creations.
But we, I think that we can.
It's a matter every time, just to spark the conversation, just starting the conversation.
Getting off.
But I think that we, you gave us a jumping point though.
And then green, lime, and purple.
And it's very on brand, this is on brand for us. She's inconsistent, if not inconsistent.
Actually, it's a little off, we haven't hit like twelve or thirteen areas.
No, we're not getting there.
Those are all behind.
Green, lime was like a tweaked green, so they didn't want, it, it's very similar.
Um. We were trying to pull students out of ES.
I don't.
It's like, it's like, remember, each time we heard about lime, we're like, why not blue?
Well, green was, because it was just, we were just trying to pull students out of ES nineteen, cause it was opening at ninety-five percent.
Well, is there, is there a interest in keeping green now, since we have lime? Is there, or is that one that could be eliminated?
I mean, from green to lime is mostly a difference of your students.
I think it's.
Well. Well, that's exactly it, my question would be.
So, how are you with that?
For these new, newest scenarios, I worry about allowing those families to have as much, like, as many calendar days for feedback as the red, orange, and yellow people have. Um, we'll never get there because those were the very beginning. But purple is still fairly new, it was spring break, you know?
Really?
Well, really, so like to put it up and have people and then take, take it back, and the same thing with the tweaked lime with, um, your constituents, Maya, like, the end of the day, they're not really moving, but maybe they really wanted to. And I don't know if you've had the opportunity to.
I've definitely been trying to engage with people, I haven't heard a lot of pushback, but also everyone knew that it was up in the air.
Right, and it's spring break, so.
So I say leave the rest of them.
Okay.
So that way people can engage with us, I can put out social media blast, this is your opportunity.
Final call.
These are, these are the final options, now is the time, if you haven't, to engage with us.
Yeah.
Right.
Right, and also, I definitely need to find out from Lionel, or, um, sorry, Mr. White, Dr. Smith, um, no, we're at work.
So especially, yeah.
Where is the, um, transportation feedback, like the rankings or the information? I know you have shared it, but I just don't have, I don't know where it is right here. And I, I do wanna assess everything that's left with the gaze of how it is going to affect transportation.
Especially cause we haven't officially heard transportation story with purple, is that what I remember?
Cause that's.
No, they, they've looked at it.
They've looked at it, they've looked at everything.
And there, and then the distance between Old Forge and Conway is five point three miles, and the distance from Old Forge to Rocky Run is four point three.
Right, and, and it's like, pick your poison, you're gonna go under ninety-five and deal with that traffic, or you're gonna go Cross Route one.
Are you gonna try to cross?
I mean, traffic is pretty hideous, point either way.
Yeah. And for that area, absolutely.
Yeah. But, yeah, I think a green, leaving green in place because that was mostly affected ES nineteen, from green to lime.
Yeah.
Yep.
And Ms. Guy, just to clarify, we did have transportation, look at them all, and they did, they did say they're all doable, they're all workable. We did not have, we had them just review in terms of, does it work, is there any significant challenges? We did not have them rank order them in terms of their preference there.
And can we put on the.
Well, I would like to know what their preference is.
That's why I was, that's why I'd love to know, if you, that's something I'd like, happy to.
I was just wondering.
You'll share with everyone. I do, I do wanna know what their preference is, because that's gonna have weight on which way I go.
Yeah.
Doesn't mean it's the way I'm gonna go, but if I vote to do something the opposite of what they want, I'm gonna have a damn good reason why.
It's a, it's like a tiebreaker for me, because I'm like, we're too.
Yeah, that's why I'm picking too.
So, um, you want, you want them to rank green, lime, and purple?
Or just, you, and I don't remember if they ranked for high school, but I think they definitely did pros and cons of each scenario, if they're not necessarily comfortable ranking.
The scenario change that happened. Yeah.
So, yeah, I'm not actually, I'm not comfortable with ranking either, because I think, I'm, I mean, A, I think it's an unfair position to put them in, because it's asking them, do you know what I mean? I, I think if they're comfortable with it, or if they can see.
Which perhaps that they're gonna make it.
If they can see pros and cons, that's fine.
Yeah, like if they can tell us what the cons are in the road. So they, these are smaller ten minutes, so. I don't, I don't wanna put them on a ranking system and then, and then disregard the ranks, right?
And not, green and lime are so close, that one might rank.
What's the difference between a ranking system and a pro and a con, and then disregard it?
Well, so, well.
I mean, we just disregard it, staffs, everything anyway, so what's, what's the difference? If you're not comfortable with it, don't look at the information, I need it, I want it, and I'm asking for it.
Yeah.
So let us work with transportation, we'll get some feedback around it, and happy to bring it back.
And let's share it with everybody at the same time, just so there's no surprises or somebody gets it and makes a change or something.
But the Friday bulletin works.
Yeah.
It does. Okay, Missy has sandwiches and stuff out there, and I would like to take just a quick break to the restroom and stuff, so we can do it, you know, five, ten minutes.
Yeah, thank you.
We're not gonna be ready to have that conversation tonight, given where the state budget is, is. But we wanted to just give you an update, uh, based on where we are right now with, uh, the scenarios from the county funding. We'll give you a couple of scenarios from state funding. And then, uh, kinda go in a little more detail on each of those, uh, really four scenarios, and what that could look like in terms of budget. We are waiting on, uh, the governor to approve the budget, he has until May second, so we'll talk a little bit about that. And try to highlight for you what we see as best and worst case scenario, really just at a high level, in terms of what we think we would be looking at. Obviously, you would be adopting the budget, but we'll share with you at a high level what we think some of the recommendations or considerations would be in the best and worst case scenario. We'll talk a little bit about the CIP, we were really pleased with where the CIP, uh, landed on Tuesday, and so we'll talk a little bit about that. Wanna touch on, uh, one-time funds and where that's sitting. And then we'll wrap up by talking about, um, there is a provision in the governor's budget that does talk about FY twenty-five, so our current fiscal year in providing a bonus. And so that is something that's out there, that's still waiting on the governor's, um, the governor's adoption within the budget. So we'll talk a little bit about that and our thoughts on what that could look like, just so that's on your radar. And then finally, a recommended timeline for the budget we'd like to share with you. Obviously, tonight, we're not here for reconciliation based on where we are. Uh, we did have a special called meeting scheduled for Tuesday, we're recommending that we not have that meeting based on where we are. So, we're, we're gonna share with you a recommended timeline for, uh, for the budget meetings moving forward and what that could look like. So with that, for the details, turn the thing over to Mr. Fulmer.
All right, uh, thank you, Dr. Smith. So, uh, as you mentioned, we're gonna start with a high-level overview of, of where we're at as far as county, um, local funding. So in your school board, um, approved budget, we had, um, a, a five million increase factored in based on the county administrator's budget. That was included in the final adopted budget from the county. Additionally, they advertised for a public hearing to increase the meals tax, um, with the intention of providing those additional funds to the schools, with the intention of those, um, going towards staff raises, so it gives us an opportunity to align, um, our overall increases to staff with what the county is proposing as their overall increases with staff, and we'll get into that, um, a little bit. So, five million, um, budgeted, uh, plus an additional three point one million budgeted with the meals tax, brings us to a total increase of eight point one. That public hearing is on May twentieth, and then the action would be that same evening after, uh, the public hearing.
Can I ask a question about the meals tax?
Yes, ma'am.
With the, the addition, that three point one is a presumed number, correct?
Correct.
And so, we think we have it, and then, cause it doesn't go, if it goes, if it, how, when would it go into effect? If it went into effect?
I believe their intention is for it to go into effect July one, then three point one is an annual number.
July one? Okay. Right.
So, which is why I assume it's July one.
Okay.
I had the same, cause it's such a late date, but, but I think that's the intention.
Yeah. Okay.
But they stated that that three point one, uh, thirty.
But when will we receive it?
Uh-huh.
If it goes into effect July one, the next year, you know, when would we get the end of that, wouldn't it be after the end of the fiscal?
So it would be included in our overall county transfer, so just, the way we function now is as we spend money, um, and it exceeds what we're receiving from the state each month, we basically, um, true up with the county, and we do a county transfer. It's all the same bank account, so it's really just a paper trail of moving the funds.
But what I'm thinking of is next June, we're, part of that three point one is through June thirtieth of next year, correct?
Right.
And on, it doesn't end next June thirtieth, it would be continued.
Well, but, but the, it's, the three point one is, is July first to June thirtieth.
One year. Yes, ma'am.
That's what they anticipate coming in. So what come, and, and that's paid the month after? I mean, I think restaurants pay it whatever, the month after.
Yeah.
So, in practice, the meals tax for the month of June, which we would be spending in the three point one, would not be collected by the county. So, in practice, the meals tax for the month of June, which we would be spending in the three point one, would not be collected by the county until after the end of the fiscal year.
That doesn't affect us, um, just.
But, but they don't know what they're collecting.
Oh, yeah, similar to sales tax, like, so that's why sometimes our state, our sales tax for FY twenty-four is one of the reasons we have a large carryover, that our sales tax number came in higher. Um, and so it went up, typically.
Sometimes it goes down.
Yeah, correct. In fact, we thought it was gonna go down during the year, and then it actually ended up going up and above the number.
But, but I just don't wanna spend money that Dr. Chase is always talking about.
Yeah, no, we don't have.
Not wearing orange.
We don't wanna wear that orange jumpsuit.
Yep. Well.
So like, like all of our, you know, the county will do, um, mid-year updates, quarterly updates, so if the meals tax is drastically trailing behind, we're not gonna, it's not gonna be a June and July issue. We're gonna start to see that trend.
But will they guarantee us the three point one? That's the question.
That, so that's my question.
Well, that's, but that's what you said, they're gonna give us three point one in the county transfer.
Right. So right now, a hundred percent of the meals tax goes to the schools now. There's never been a situation where they said, hey, we didn't meet our seals, meals tax number, and then they short us.
I'm just concerned about budgeting and spending three point one that may or may not happen. It may be four point one, but it could also be two point one.
I think the point is, like, for us, it's guaranteed. They're actually.
That, that was my question.
Cause they, for them, they are taking the risk, but are we going to?
Guaranteeing us three point one, right? They're guaranteeing us.
They're taking the risk and the rest.
Right, but, well, that was gonna be, my next question is, if for some reason it ends up being two point five, are we, they going to expect,
Okay, if that's, if that's a case, that's right.
Us to adjust the budget.
Like, us to credit, but at the same time, if it goes to four, do we get that as well? Like, do we get to pay in and prize, or?
If they're guaranteeing it, I have no problem. No problem if they guarantee the three point one.
So, uh, I, I will say, like any of our funds, I don't know if they can guarantee a hundred percent. They appropriate ninety-five percent of the total transfer to the schools and the schools budget. So, um, they always have the authority to not release that last five percent. In my time here, they've always released that. Right now, in their policies, we already get a hundred percent of the meals tax, and the years that it goes above.
I, I thought they changed that in April.
This past April or previous?
No, April twenty-four. I thought that changed. Let me look it up.
Um, my understanding is it's, we get a hundred percent of the meals tax, and in the years that the meals tax revenue has exceeded budget, they put that into our capital reserve fund, so our carryover.
Has it ever been lower?
It's never been lower.
Um, for people who are just starting to listen and pay attention, explain what the meals tax is, like what tax that's on. They're asking all my questions. I'm just gonna check them off. Thanks, Maya.
Um, yeah, so not my expertise, but just generally speaking, so.
I know you know.
What's that?
I said, I know you know.
You've hated your life.
So right now, right, yeah. I, my, my budget's getting a lot tighter with this one percent increase. Um, so, right now, it's a, a five percent meals tax. They're looking at our surrounding localities of what are charged on that, like fast food meals and other kinda ready-to-eat things.
We need to eat platters from grocery stores.
Uh, and we're, we're behind Spotsylvania, Fred City, I'm not sure about Prince William, and I even think with this increase, we'll still be maybe behind.
So it's pre-sophomore in Stafford County. That's what I would've wanted you to say, for people that don't know what the meals tax.
So why didn't you just say that?
There you go.
Because I wanted it to come from an official. People will listen to them better than you, or I'm an official.
Or an official.
That's right, my bad.
So we're going from five percent to six percent on the meal tax, that's.
That's what they're advertising.
And that's any prepared food in Stafford County that you purchase.
Right, which puts us closer with, um, surrounding localities.
Maya, it's time to expand restaurant week.
I mean, yeah, I think so. Well, now we just don't, people will wanna go and pay an extra one percent on their food. We should watch that go right on down the drain as well.
So, so we are saying, assuming this passes in, in May after the public hearing, we are completely secure in.
Yes.
Including that three point one in our funds that we are budgeting for next year. That's, if you say yes, then I'm okay.
That is my understanding, yes.
Well, let's double check before we.
We will get further.
Can we, can we double check on that?
Yeah, because, because we don't wanna be in a situation where halfway through the year, we find out that we have to cut a million and a half dollars out of our budget, right? So.
Three point one.
Right.
And I'll reiterate what Chris said. We, we monitor our, our revenue stream month by month, and so this would be just like everything else we're monitoring along the way. If we feel like, hey, things aren't coming in, or if that's the case, like just with the state, we start to take a look at that. So we do monitor it, all of it along the way to make sure that's.
Sure, but we don't want to go into it, spending it, and then have to cut personnel in the middle of the school year.
Yes. Absolutely. Absolutely.
Right?
Or cancel field trips and.
Yeah, I, I mean, so the question really then on the table, Chris, is like, we're, we're gonna verify that, like, you know, um, I've got my, we're your agent, and we're telling you to make sure that we don't even get a deal that doesn't guarantee us money whether we play or not, right? Like, that's about one. Cause, because we're going to play with this money.
Right.
And so if you're not gonna guarantee it, then that's, that's our, that's our risk, and that falls back on us, and I'm not comfortable with that either. Because, you know, I get it, it's all in good faith, right? Like, you're gonna do this one percent, and I, and I appreciate it, that's not the point. I just wanna make sure that we're gonna, we're gonna target specific things with the idea that we have eight point one, not that we have five, correct?
Correct.
So I just wanna make sure that it is a guaranteed three point one, and hopefully it is four, but.
I'm sorry, I have another question. I know you're on slide one, but just, just nature of the beast.
Yeah, yeah.
But, the public hearing is on May twentieth. Will have issued contracts before then, am I, or am I wrong? I'm, I'm asking, I'm, I'm asking out loud.
That's an excellent.
So that's a, well, we're gonna work through that.
It's the next one.
And if it doesn't pass, like if people say, I don't wanna pay an extra meals tax, and this doesn't go through, then what is our, you know, cause that's an option too, correct?
Then we're at the five.
Okay, so we, okay, go ahead, I'm sorry. I got it.
And we'll get into several different scenarios here in just a moment, but I'll, I'll give the high-level state budget scenario. Not much has changed in the last few weeks, where nothing has changed. We're still waiting on, on the governor. We basically have, there's three different scenarios, but it really only is two scenarios when it comes to, to the dollars. If the governor accepts the general assemblies budget or does not act between now and May second, we will go, um, to the general assemblies budget that was included in your school board approved budget. That had the overall increase of eighteen point nine million dollars. Our worst-case scenario is, is that he vetoes that general assembly budget, and we go back to last year's, second year of the biennium budget. That would means, we, we mean, we would only see an increase of six point one million dollars, um, and we'll get into that as well, but that's a twelve point seven million dollar reduction over what you had in your school board approved budget, which still had a large funding gap. Um, so, we have four scenarios, but the, I'm gonna kinda just show, I've got the red box, just kinda outlining the scenario I'm gonna talk through each time, and we're gonna work down, and then I'll go to the next one and work through the next scenario. So our first scenario, our worst-case scenario, which means the meals tax doesn't pass, we don't get that additional three point one million, and the biennium budget is what we fall back to, so we see that big reduction. From your school board approved budget, which only had the five million dollars from the county transfer assumed, um, we have that twelve point seven million dollar reduction, which means our funding gap now is at thirty-one million dollars, which is, which is what we see here. That's our adjusted funding gap. Um, however, below, and this is not an assumption of what you want to do, but this is just giving you some context of where we would land. If we remove all discretionary compensation, which is really the items that we identified as discretionary in the budget, um, and we give the one percent to get from our one and a half up to the two and a half, we would still have a funding gap of about sixteen and a half million dollars.
We're using two and a half, cause that's what the county is doing for their employees, two and three quarters.
They're doing two point seven five, which we can target that as well. This was just a starting place, two and a half.
No, I just wanted, I wanted to put out there why we.
Two, the reason we're showing two and a half is because we need to do an average of two and a half to maintain our scale integrity.
Okay.
We're gonna have, um, we're gonna take some major steps backwards in our scales, if we can't move, progress people up a step.
And I will say, in our initial look at this, and you'll get to it when we talk about the last scenario here, uh, it would still require us to make some cuts to get there. We felt like we could probably get there. Getting to two point seven five is gonna take several more cuts, and so that's just our initial look since Tuesday and trying to plan for this. So that's the other reason we started.
And I've mentioned to Dr. Smith, and I wanna mention this for next year, if we have to give a certain salary increase to get state money, could we please not call that non-discretionary?
Yeah, it's a great point. Yeah, something we just kinda overlooked, cause we put the compensation adjustments in the bottom, but it was a requirement to get the state funding. We're actually, the state funding a hundred percent paid for that one and a half percent.
Right, cause if we're gonna, like I, we're gonna, we're gonna give that, whatever raise we're required to by the state, we're gonna have to give the money back if we don't.
Yeah. Correct.
So it shouldn't be non-discretionary. It should be, I mean, it shouldn't be discretionary, it should be non-discretionary.
Yeah.
Yeah, and just like I shared with you too, we never, we did not think at that point we were gonna get down to the one point fully. I think, we thought it was gonna be much higher than that, and so, but, point well taken, and, and we will do that.
And hopefully we will be, I mean.
We agree.
Hopefully the worst case is not gonna be that we deal with.
Jumping to our second worst scenario, um, would be still the biennium budget, but we get the additional meals tax money of three point one million dollars. Um, so you'll, you see that there, where we're up to four hundred and seventy-five million dollars of total revenue. That would bring our funding gap to about twenty-seven, uh, point nine million dollars. And then, uh, backing out everything except the two and a half percent would get us down to thirteen point four million dollar funding gap. So still very far off from balancing the budget. Third scenario, which is, um, we get the general assembly budget, um, that was budgeted in the school board's approved budget, but we don't get the three point one million dollars. So this is like our second, um, best scenario we could see, um, occurring, means, and, and you'll see, this number's gonna look familiar, eighteen point three, that was your funding gap in your school board approved budget. Um, and then reducing all of our salary scales down to only seeing an increase of a two point five percent means we have a three point eight million dollar funding gap. And then, our best-case scenario right now, as far as funding, would be that we get the general assemblies budget, and we get the additional three point one million dollars in the meals tax, as discussed by the board supervisors. That brings your school board adjusted funding gap down to fifteen point two million dollars, and then our funding gap with the two and a half percent compensation increase, um, is down to just under seven hundred thousand dollars, and some of these are rounded, so, but that's very close to what our funding gap would be.
So can we just clarify, because the school board's budget, we're way off of that, right?
Correct.
So, so be clear on what you're talking about for people listening, because if people are thinking that we're gonna have the money for adjusting the base by a thousand dollars, and that we're going to be able to get to, is it phase three of the support cap, you know, so, so can we clarify what we're talking about here for the.
Yep, yeah, I've, yeah, I've been trying to. So this here is our school board adjusted funding gap. So with everything in the, in the school board's budget, we'd still be at a fifteen point two million, and then reducing all the compensation adjustments out gets us down to a seven hundred thousand dollars gap.
Okay. So basically, we're just maintaining at the integrity of our salary scale.
For scale.
Yep.
We're doing this, we're doing the superintendent's budget, we're not doing the school board's budget.
And. Yeah.
Well, I was just gonna say, like, this has been the last year.
Well, is that.
Even different from that, actually. That's less than that.
This was the last time.
Have you ever seen the lesson?
We're, we're not doing yours, or we're not doing any.
No.
No, this is.
We're not doing anything, cause we don't have a state budget, and we're just discussing.
No, but.
No, but those numbers aren't even reflected, but that one you've done.
Those numbers don't even reflect, Dr. Smith, by the way.
Right. But, I'm just, just wanna make sure.
So the only.
We're millions of dollars shy of what you even presented.
This is.
Wait, that was the best-case scenario?
Yes.
Definitely, it's the best-case scenario, Maya.
Sorry.
And that's as we see it now. I know we're gonna talk a little bit more in the next slide, but I, I just put a little bit more around this, is once we get the state budget, they will release a new calc tool for us,
and we'll run the numbers again. So they give us a calc tool, so that's what we go off of, but once the state releases a budget, or once the state files a budget, hopefully May, you know, no later than May second,
we will have that calc tool, and we'll bring it back to the updated numbers.
Hopefully it'll be correct. Yes, that'd be nice too. Remember, they have two million dollars one way, and could've been two million dollars the other way.
They've had a lot of timed improvements, it should be.
I mean, chance they have four million, I, I mean, never mind.
Well, I don't even know what number we're gonna go to.
No, yeah, it's rich. Just come over and ask him for the fifteen million. Just say, hey, you can use, just don't, you know.
We wanted to at least start the conversation so that you could help provide some guidance to us. Um, I wanna preface that with, these are just potential recommendations, from the superintendent, that him and I have talked about, uh, but really, we need your input on, on what we would have to do. But we wanted to start talking about, if we are faced with that worst-case scenario, um, we are looking at some pretty drastic adjustments to the school board's approved budget, obviously, but then even above that, going backwards in some of our other areas, for instance, we would, um, have to explore increasing class sizes again. Uh, we did that in FY twenty-five to help balance the budget. So in our twenty-six budget, um, we would, we would look at that, um, most likely only looking at that one and a half percent compensation, um, adjustment, uh, because that is, uh, is funded by the, by the state. Um, we're already doing five to seven and a half percent insurance, um, adjustments, premiums for, uh, our employees, so we would potentially have to look at increasing that again to help offset costs. And then, uh, just a, a couple of other options, um, cleaning standards, so we could, we could ask our custodial staff to basically clean less or staff less, um, uh, and, and try to work with not having that impact the school day, but we could save money that way.
It's gonna have to next.
We would have to reduce our tuition.
Don't we have a contract that we are under that we can't just.
Yeah, we have a contract, but we, we have some.
And does it say we can modify it at will?
Well, we always have a, um, non-appropriation clause, and so we have adjustments in our contracts where we could revisit.
Non-appropriation by who?
We could also.
By school board?
From board of supervisors, but if we don't have the, if we don't have the funds to pay it.
But they just give us a lump. They give us a lump sum. I mean, we're making choices. I just wanna make sure that we know what our options are with respect to that contract before we start talking about making contractual changes.
Yes, ma'am, and we already have our maintenance procurement team are already kinda knee-deep in it, looking at it in case we're faced with our kinda worst-case scenario.
And I'd have our legal team, team of one.
Absolutely.
I work, I work with procurement.
Yes, very close then. Um, we'd have to look at how much we offer for tuition assessment. We have, we have caps on it each year, but we might have to lower that cap. Um, and then just overall program offerings, uh, without getting into specifics, but we would kinda take a look at everything.
Essentially, everything would be on the table.
Right, so.
Including sports.
So when we're looking, when we're looking at the best-case scenario, and you have two and a half percent to two point seven five percent, so in the budget that you brought to us, at one point, you had three percent to maintain, give everybody their three percent step, but everybody above sixteen years only got one and a half percent. What are we talking about here? Are we talking about flat across for everybody? Are we talking about maintaining a scale, and people at the higher end would get one and a half?
Yeah, it's a great question, cause earlier I mentioned average of two and a half percent. So we need an average of two and a half percent to do a step adjustment. So we have some people at the bottom of the scale making less, so it's not, dollar amounts aren't as big, but those are still three percent differentials on today's scale. Um, as you get to your sixteen and above, those are only one and a half percent adjustments on the license scale. It's different on the service scale, cause it varies.
I just don't, I just don't want people who are listening thinking, okay, I'm gonna get this, but then they don't actually get it.
Yep.
So I just wanted to clarify. So that's an average. So when you look at this two and a half to two, two and three quarters, it's, it's an average.
Right.
And, and back to, once again, I did wanna point out, this is for discussion. Obviously, a school, we need school board's input in that, and, and you guys will have the final say there.
Right, 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 right. Yes.
We just, we wanted to bring forward kinda what we are facing as we move forward over the next couple of weeks.
So with, with the best case, we're still fifteen million dollar difference, right?
No. Yes.
Can we give that some.
To your original budget.
From our, from our original budget.
From our original budget.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And a lot of that is because, you know, we're, we added phase four of the salary scale. We added adjusting the base.
Right. We added the supports.
Okay. Yeah.
So basically, it cuts everything that we added.
Everything that we, yes. And we are, we are treading water with the, um, salary scale is basically what we're doing.
In there. And, you know, I don't.
Well, we're actually not, because adding the two and a half percent, I know it, to you, it's treading water. To me, it's moving forward, or at least staying in place, because there were many, many years in.
Where people got no step at all.
We did nothing.
Yep.
And then eventually, we did away with the steps, because people would say, well, I'm five steps behind.
Well, you know, you remind me of Malcolm X when you say that, because, and not that this is about race or politics or anything, but the, the, the idea, he said something, I'm gonna mess it up, but he was like, if you have a knife in my back and it's in two inches and you pull it out one, that's not progress. And that's how I feel. This is not progress. Also, when we think about the superintendent's original budget, and he presented it to people, and people were pretty pissed off. They weren't as kindly, you know, they didn't ingratiate themselves to that budget. They were like, we need more money to go to staff. We want you to be more aggressive, and we were. We absolutely listened in that moment. So we just need to understand that this is not gonna feel like progress to anyone, even though the numbers might say that it is, because, you know, there were no step increases. I don't underst, like, that's, that's in the past and stuff, but.
And we're charging more for healthcare.
Yeah, this is not progress. This is wrong.
Yeah.
Well, I was, I was gonna say, so.
And, yeah.
Junction with. And inflation, and, you know, it's, so, so.
Well, right, so, so, yeah.
And so as a standalone, it's bad enough. Right?
Yeah. Even in the best-case scenario, but then if you look at our worst, or even if, even if they're, I mean, I guess we don't get to fall anywhere in between these two, really it is, but, but program offerings, I think, like, I, I, I heard everybody come out the other night, and I watched all, everybody give their comments or whatever, and so it's really nice to talk about cutting budgets and programs and stuff like that as a way, I get it, to be fiscally responsible, but we're talking about the impact that this is gonna have, and, and we talk about our teachers and staff, but on our kids. So for me, the biggest pain point here is taking away any access that these kids have to anything. Sports, because some of these kids are. Sports, because some of these kids are relying on those scholarships and they will be literally poised in this moment in time as a last, like, our juniors, this is their last option to get, sorry, I don't remember why my phone, oh. This is their last chance to get that that scholarship or that whatever. And we are literally talking about getting into this because, and I get it, we can have the conversation about tax increases all day long. Nobody wants them, nobody asks for them. It's it's a conversation that makes me wanna bang my head against a brick wall. But at the end of the day, this is this is the impact of that.
The best case scenario is still bad.
If cutting options for our kids are.
Well, this is the governor's, the governor's.
Right, but but this is still, but this still comes as, well, sort of.
Input in that. No, if the governor does, if the governor vetoes it, then we're in the worst case.
Correct, we are, but we're still fifteen million dollars behind, which we didn't ask for the state to provide us.
If he doesn't, no deal.
The best case scenario was still bad.
We asked our local government to provide.
No, so like, I agree, two and a half percent is less than our staff wants, needs, or deserves, right? For me, and I'm a glass half-full kind of person, right? For me, the biggest step as far in the term, in terms of progress that we made with this budget and this year is that the county recognized that both sets of employees should get the same percentage. Because throughout the evening, I was there for all of it, they were talking about, well, last year they got eight percent or last year they got six percent, and I'm like, wow. Eight percent, six percent, so and we talked about a lot, so maybe my memory's not great. They had one of their budget priorities was to do a section of their, what they call a market pay adjustment, right? And they took that off, correct, on the county side.
It's still in.
And is it still in?
Yes.
So they're doing their market pay adjustment. So they're interesting.
Right, and I mean, you know, it's like, I reminded you a.
I'm a little less.
Happy right now, but.
Honey, somebody just dumped your cup over.
Which is, you know, this history that they did in one year, an adjustment for the entire public safety,
Oh, I'm not arguing.
put them on a scale and we had to do it over five years and here we are.
Which we gave them.
Which which we gave them and now and now we're not doing year four, right?
And they don't.
So.
And we're not doing the service stuff. We gave them everything. They knew what our budget needs were going to be. It's not like we've kept this a secret. We have been very clear in a five-year budget what we were trying to do and we were trying to be respectful of the fact that we have fifty-four hundred employees. And all of them deserve the raises that we're asking for and seventy-one percent of them are residents in Stafford County. So, yeah.
And now we're raising your bill tax.
And this is why when you talk about taking away programs and access to kids, if we go with the worst case scenario, we have to juxtaposition that with paying employees a livable wage. You know, those kids have to eat, too, because they live with the employees as well. And so so yes, I need a scholarship, and I say this as a mother who's had three kids that got scholarships. Okay, so that's, I appreciate the scholarships my kids got and those three kids have graduated. That being said, I still gotta pay mortgage, got a car note, you know, I I just, I mean, I don't I don't I don't know what the best thing to do is.
No, no, I totally hear, but what I'm saying is this, this is the impact of what. It's it's theoretical to stand up there and say in your mind, right, when you're when you're talking about things. Theoretically, if it goes up this much, then I might be out that much or whatever, but this is the hardcore reality of that, right? So now you're gonna be out college tuition or now you might, your kid might be out the opportunity because we can't afford to provide that program for them. Or what if we have to start charging for sports?
Well, but what if we just don't, what if we just don't even have any teachers?
Who's got the money for that?
Well, that would, what if we just don't have any teachers? I mean, I hear about all this other stuff, but the fact is, if I don't have a qualified teacher in the classroom,
Right.
you're not gonna have the skills to get any dug on scholarship.
Oh, for me, you know.
And and ourirs to the north are giving a six and a half percent raise.
No, I mean. I hear you. No, I hear you.
So so, yeah.
I'm clearly I agree with you guys, but I'm just saying is, we can, with the impact, no, I didn't, I wasn't dismissing the impact on the staff.
Not to give our license status.
I'm I'm emphasizing what this act, the granularity of this as well.
Yeah.
How bad this is gonna be.
And then the other, you know, side of that is you have people saying, well, stop paying for the extras, stop cutting the extra, you know, stop. We don't need all these extras. We have to tighten our belts. When we talk about what that means as far as class size, like, for me, extra is anything above SOQs, which are local priorities because those are decisions we can make and that these board, like, either the seven of us and everybody before us decided where the Virginia SOQs was below what Stafford County wanted. And then they, these boards, our boards, have decided to invest in where they wanna put, you know, the extras. And it's to keep class sizes not at thirty-five for elementary, right?
And we're saving benefits for that. We're saving our test scores for.
Right, so if we're gonna cut extras, they need to know what that means. And it means thirty-five fourth graders in a classroom. It means.
Well, it also means no nurse in the building.
Yes.
That's not an SOU.
And itinerant counselors, because isn't the counselor number, you know, below.
Well, not good anymore.
Maybe we need to share.
Schools are.
Are we allowed to?
We don't have to have nurses.
That's right, I forgot, we don't have to have.
Nurses are not SOU positions.
It means deans of students. It means special ed chairs, like, all these things that make our kids' lives easier, which makes our staff's lives lives easier, that goes, those are technically extras.
Well, all the barriers.
I wouldn't even say easier. Honestly, it's better. That's, it's not even easier. It's just better. Because I mean, we all can, you know, easy is something you can do without. Better is something we need.
But that's.
All right, can we, can we hear about the CIP now?
Yeah. Good news.
I'm I'm usually the pessimist, but I don't think we're gonna be in the worst case, so.
I don't either, but I don't either, but I also think, you know me and my expectation management, right?
I'll be an optimist on that one. I wanna be in the best case.
I agree. I do agree with you, but but I'm an expectation manager.
All right, so moving over to the capital improvement plan, it does have better alignment this year with the school board's request. So we made some progress there, starting with our major capital projects. This isn't a surprise, but the continuation of High School Six, Eighteen, and Nineteen. We had an amended budget for the Drew Middle School rebuild, which included land and some of the offsite cost that was approved at the full amount. And some major progress, they moved up the opening date of Harwood Elementary School, so it would open in August of twenty twenty-eight, the same year that we would open the Drew Middle School rebuild. So that did move up a a several years in the county CIP from last year to this year. The North Stafford Fine Arts Wing was part of the CIP this year with a completion date in August of twenty twenty-eight. And then if you recall, we moved some of our major mechanical work, actually to the large capital CIP instead of our three R list. And Rodney Thompson Critical Systems major mechanical work was funded. So these are like projects that will all start pulling out, pulling money this next year, whether it's design or some of the actual construction costs. Another area made great progress, I'm gonna give a little history real quick on three R. We're usually in the six, seven, maybe eight million dollar range of recurring dollars. Last year or this current year that we're in, in the FY twenty-five budget, they did allocate one-time money to give a, kinda infuse our three R funding and that got us up to about fourteen and a half million. Now, we're up to seventeen million, that's a combination of cash and debt finance, so it is not one-time money. Could look at that as recurring and that's part of their CIP that each year, and that was an approach that we took this year was, look, we know we can't ask for twenty, twenty-five million. If we can just get to seventeen, which is a little bit more than we got last year, and then each year, let's start to gradually increase that number up to something sustainable.
I I do appreciate that the board of supervisors has improved their funding on that because that's a huge thing because so often we were triaging so many projects off the list because we just didn't.
So is that?
I appreciate that, too, but let's not act like, you know, unfortunately, the issue that happened at Rodney Thompson and us being very vocal and honest to the public about it is the reason why we're getting what we're getting.
Well, that my thought, my, you know, I wanted to say on the record, this denim is here, but CIP Advisory Committee has done a really great job at breaking down this like highly technical, kind of boring unless you're mechanically inclined conversations and making them, you know, digestible and understandable and how, you know.
And relatable to what's going, the actuality.
Yes, like that families understand, like, this is what's going on.
What your kids are off going to.
And, you know, you just hear a major mechanical blow, 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 and it's like gibberish. And you're like, oh, so the water bladder can, you know, we could have, this is what this means. And I think that that is definitely a key part of, honestly, even the board of sup- helping the board of supervisors understand what we're talking about, right? That it's not just acronyms and whatever.
Yeah.
Yes, they should just leave us when we tell them we need money, right? Like for maintenance, they don't have to understand, like, the actual nuts and bolts of what's being fixed. But we all understand scheduled maintenance, right? We get our oil changed and our tires rotated, but.
But I don't know that the board of supervisors fully understood that for us to replace an HVAC system in a school might cost you an order of magnitude more than for you to change an HVAC system in your house.
A hundred percent.
And I think that the CIP has been very effective at in kind of differentiating.
Kudos to the school board and our parents and advisory groups for their advocacy because.
Oh, yeah, and the citizens' budget committee for being there.
Is the Stafford High School concession restrooms, I saw the meeting, I know what that's about, but is that included in the seventeen million?
No.
Or is that a, because I know their funding.
Part of it, part of it was in twenty-seven or twenty-eight, twenty-seven, within ours, yes.
It was in ours. And now they're using all their funds to.
They're using proffer money for.
Proffer money.
Yeah, they're supplementing with their funds so that we can start that work this year towards the design and get that rolling.
And hard, hard money.
So we're gonna, we're working on the specifics of what that timeline looks like and then how we can allocate that additional funding to get that work done as quickly as possible. All right, any other questions on on, and I did, just so you can see a comparison, you do have like just a one pager that shows all of your your projects compared to when the county approved them as an opening date. So I know some of them, they all they all line up and they're not all funded, but that doesn't like discredit the amount of like effort and work and improvement in the CIP. What's not even shown on here is the the movement we made on our three R list as well.
Okay. I'm really excited.
All right, shifting a little bit, so this was still a FY twenty-five going into FY twenty-six. We knew we needed to would have bridged the gap. We didn't have enough money in our our operating fund to do some of our annual cyclical replacement that we've talked about for actually several months. And we had proposed using our FY twenty-four carryover funds to do some of that work, specifically doing some Chromebook and teacher classroom equipment for a total of three point one million dollars. We also had identified the purchase of our blackjack warehouse space at a cost of two point nine million dollars. And that was using FY twenty-four one-time money that was carryover money from schools that we did not spend in twenty-four. And just taking a chance to to remind everybody, a lot of that was because of shifts in state revenue. So state was telling us our revenue was going down on our calc tool mid-year and they had the end. So we started cutting back spending to make sure we didn't go over budget. We ended up getting excess sales tax even over the original budget, so we saw, you know, three, four million dollar swing that we couldn't control. And so that's moved over into some carryover funds.
So you're just trying to make it clear that that wasn't money we could have put in salary that we chose not to. It was money we didn't have.
It was, yes, it was not over budgeting. It wasn't, you know, we don't have a bunch of money we can cut from our budget because we had six million dollars.
Nor should it be money that we should give back, which was mentioned as well. We should not give that money back because it's not like we knew that was gonna happen and I just wanna make that clear.
Correct. So two timelines shown on here and I'll I'll explain why. We've already talked to, you guys have taken action on the Blackjack Road property and it was contingent upon a lot of stuff falling in place there. We've talked to the county staff and shared information with the county and board of supervisors. Our plan is next week, there's a board of supervisors work session. We would be there to answer any questions on the Blackjack Road property and how we would use those funds to purchase the property, how we use the property now, and then follow up at the May sixth meeting where they would take action on that.
Will you go in? So they could go either way, right? Like, if they approve the Blackjack, then we get it, spend the money. If they don't, then.
But can we also go on the record as explaining, like, this is, like, we are currently leasing this building at a rent, like, at the leasing rate or whatever it is.
Hundred twenty-five thousand.
Hundred twenty-five thousand dollars for the year. And and requests or questions have been asked of us of why we haven't looked to lease another property instead of buying this one. And so, you know, we're looking for complete transparency and I fear that the message will get out there that we're being fiscally irresponsible by not leasing instead of the reality, which is current leasing rates are exponentially higher than they used to be when we got this building. And at the end of the day, we own nothing. It's also going to cost us additional money to retrofit another warehouse to the space that we have when we are already actively living in the, in this particular land piece. So so however this turns out, the decision on this, from my perspective, and everybody can correct me if I'm wrong, is that, it's like my mom used to say, don't, what are you renting for? It's taking a max to your money. You have nothing to show for it at the end of the day. This is a property that has a tenant on it. This is a property that over time will cost, will save us so much money exponentially and has the potential for us to collocate some things in the future with the county. So there are like fifteen winning variables on this.
And and I've tried to point that out, but I wanna take a chance now to point that out, too. That hundred and twenty-five thousand that we would save in lease, we'd instantly actually cut into this seven hundred thousand dollar funding gap that we have.
There you go.
In our, in our best case scenario and it would help in any of our other scenarios as well.
And I know that, you know, the feedback I've heard from, you know, when I hear other people, like board of supervisors or even in the public, you know, why not just take that money and use it towards salaries and we talk about that's one-time money? Why, you know, why are you gonna buy another building when you can't maintain the ones you have? Well, we're building four, so we are, like, we can't make decisions in that that way. We would essentially have a hundred and twenty-five thousand avail available if it were appropriated to us for that type of maintenance. That being said, we've asked for maintenance money year over year. So we can't, I mean, we can't operate in a world where we can't do what we need to do because of what might happen in the future. I feel like we just had this conversation with your districting, but.
Well, what I'm, what I'm looking for is when when we had the discussion here about the the capital purchase and one of the supervisors was very much, had lots of opinions and ideas and, but it's a constant narrative from the same individuals of, have you looked here? Have you done, like, you guys, you know, already brought us the the information in the slide deck of when you guys went and looked at other properties. So can you send that to them? So that they don't have to ask us the same dang question and waste our time and waste your time again? If that is sent, I mean, it is wasteful. It's wasteful when we have the information and we've already done it to tell us to do it again. I'd like to see you look at that again, but I'd like to see you pay for us to look at that again. You know, it's 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 ridiculous and I don't, I mean, I'm not expecting you to have my energy when you go there. But I would love to give them this information beforehand, is all I'm saying, so that, because if it's an honest question, which I don't believe it is any longer, but if it is an honest question, then, you know, let's give them that information. Yet we've already looked at it, so here it is again, and look at the numbers. This is the way forward, you know? That's all I'm asking.
And we've continued to work, even after that joint schools working committee, we've had some discussions with county staff about how they can use part of the building space, too. Once we own it, we can do, we can put in some racking systems in there that lets us actually have more efficient use of the space, which will free up some space for the county staff to use.
But do we want to do that? Is that the decision that we wanna do? That building with that extra space, we have needs as well that that space needs to be used for us. I mean, and if we decide that we wanna use it for with staff, with county, that's fantastic, but.
When I visited it this morning with supervisors or this afternoon, one of the things they commented on was they don't have a classroom for some of their stuff. So could they sometimes use that classroom? I mean, I don't think there's anything wrong with shared services where it makes sense, right? And I don't think we should shut that down as, you know, right.
I don't think anyone said that. What I said is we need to make that decision. That shouldn't be a decision maker because one of them said it. We should make that decision because we have needs. Our needs are competing with theirs, but we do have needs.
It's like when my kid, one of our, like, I get my one kid a new hoodie and her, you know, the sister takes it, right?
I mean, you just said we're building four, so it's not like we can't use that extra space if that tenant moves. I'm not saying I don't wanna do that. I'm just saying, don't change, we should not allow them to change the narrative of why we need this building. That's all. That is a potential and that's a positive, but it's also not a negative if we decide we actually need that entire building. That's it.
I I just wanna say that we just leased Blackjack Road property when we first came on the board because it's very easy for a company that leases a building to decide that they're gonna do something else with it. And then we're stuck with the responsibility of finding a new location, moving, re-retrofitting it, moving everything out of it, and then usually paying more money. So, for example, we're going from a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year to two hundred and ten thousand dollars a year. We still don't own it. We still have to retrofit it and we have to spend money to move everything that's in it out of it. And it's just, it's not cost effective and we have the reserve funds. But I have no problem with sharing the space if it's a, if it's viable for us.
Me either, if we decide that.
But I just think that.
So one of the things I pointed out was, we have some some peak times and some lower times based on when we have major furniture orders or 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 other orders coming in and we image computers and then ship them back out. So we have, there might be a period where we have a bay. So we have, there might be a period where we have a bay three and if they have high peak times where they need to pull stuff in and store it there while we have that low time. So we're completely open to that and willing to work with it.
Alright.
Can we hear about the bonus payment?
Okay, can I, can I just say something? If the way we can get this is to agree that we will share it to the extent it's feasible to maintain our operations, I say go for it. Because this is a one-time opportunity to buy this per property. If we don't buy it and the, and the landlord is going to sell it, somebody else is gonna come in, we're gonna have to move at the end of our lease and then we will lose the opportunity.
I don't disagree, but that'll still be our decision if, if that's the narrative that we wanna take. That's all I'm saying is.
This window is closing.
Some point we gotta like actually control our.
You know, it's not like we can say we'll decide next year. If that landlord, and I have no idea who the landlord is, but if they, you know, intend to sell it, they're gonna sell it. And it's a pretty good market for, you know, warehouse space right now because it brings in revenue and, you know, there's, there's a demand for it. So I, I would hope that, that the supervisors will keep an open mind, but when I was listening the other night, they asked you, Mr. Palmer, well, if you don't buy Blackjack, if we don't approve Blackjack, do you have other things to spend the money on? And of course you said, yes, we have a warrant.
We always have stuff.
So, so they, you know, for the, for them, you know, they recognize it's our money. It's just we have to get their authorization to, to buy the Blackjack.
Again, significantly impacting the conversation about fiscal responsibility is this one. So I don't know why you wouldn't approve the purchase of this property with that money, recognizing that we are being as fiscally responsible as we can because the cost savings over time is hundreds of thousands of dollars, not ten thousand dollars, not whatever. It is hundreds of thousands of dollars. So for me, that has now been stated out loud and I'd like to see some common sense variables put on paper in a pie chart so that we can also present that because it gets a little frustrating when we walk back from common sense, which everybody knows, you know. Anyway, that's it. I'm, I'm already in trouble, so I'll just.
I do wanna touch on, because as we brought the budget and talked about using the one-time money for our other Chromebook and technology purchases and classroom technology, we haven't had a formal vote on that, so we don't feel it's right to go and ask the board supervisors for that. So we wanna come back on May thirteenth and go ahead and make a, a decision by the school board for us to move forward with that request. And then we would immediately send that over. We'll let the county know that it's coming so we can move that forward as quickly as possible on the cap.
When that comes forward to us, can you show us the, you know, where that three point one fits in the total plan? You know, what we need and what we're gonna do next. I mean, clearly we're doing this because we have the funding, but I'm sure there's other needs and, you know, is this, you know, a significant portion of it or is it, you know, when, when it, when is it? I think that would be helpful for me to know. I mean, I'm not.
And where, where is it going?
Not approve it, but I wanna know what's, what's, what are we looking at in terms of finishing out the project?
And we can share that in terms of the, the Chromebooks at the, you know, at the different levels and what that's looking at. There is, part of the pieces around is to, it helps out with some teacher desktops. We have some desktops that actually are running Windows ten and so that's no longer being supported by Microsoft as of October. And so we have to, otherwise those computers won't work anymore. And so part of that money is to replace some of those, but we can explain all of that to you.
Yeah, I think that needs to come.
I'm less concerned about what you're buying here because I trust that this is what we need, but what else do we need that's not being funded here? I wanna put that in perspective. I'm, I'm okay with this, but there's gotta be more.
I actually want more information about this, so yeah.
Yeah, you as well.
I do as well.
Yeah, we'll bring that.
Can I ask a question about the Blackjack property? Have we done like a full, like a home inspection?
Facility, yep. We did a facility study on it and it came back and said it was.
Do we, we don't have like an impending roof in like a next year or something?
So there's, they recommend some things on the roof, nothing like immediate need to replace the whole roof. It's more of like, hey, so we're working with the seller right now as far as making sure it's got the proper roof coating and stuff, but overall it actually came back with a really high facility condition index on it.
With.
Alright, so also tied to the state budget is, part of the general assembly is they approved bonuses in FY twenty five, so using one-time money. What they funded was a thousand dollars for SOQ funded positions with no local match. However, they also realized that divisions have more than just the SOQ positions. So they gave the ability to adjust the dollar amounts that you could extend that bonus to all of your employees. What that comes to in Stafford, it's about three point four million dollars that we're getting that we can use for our employees. And what we've typically done is if we have contracted employees, so not hourly employees, but if we have full-time and part-time contracted or part-time, we'd get fifty percent or their proportionate share if they're point seven five. So in this instance, what we can afford, looking at all of our current FTEs with that three point four million is to do seven hundred dollars for a full-time contracted employee and then three hundred and fifty for the part-time.
Again, this is tied to the governor's, what he has to decide by May second, so it's not guaranteed. And so we did just wanna share this with you because this is a possibility.
This is, he doesn't veto it.
He doesn't, it's, yep, it's part of the general assembly budget. Yes, ma'am.
So if he's, either signs it or doesn't veto it.
He gave to me.
Yes, and now it's unclear to me about whether this is, is separable. Sometimes they have the separability where they can break apart different pieces. I'm unclear whether this could be, he could do one thing on one, one piece of the budget and then separate up this, but this is, this is included.
Since this is technically FY twenty five, I think it's kind of broken out separately from that twenty six, so we're gonna have to see how it all shakes out.
And we just wanted to let you know, cause this could, I mean, this could be May second, right? That we know about this and we could be ready to, to move on this.
And so we'll bring that.
So when we see it at the meeting, don't be surprised.
Yep.
If we don't see it at the meeting, well, we don't.
And then just know, we're targeting the, if you look at the language from the state, it says a June first distribution date. When you dig into that and talk to the people at the state, they've extended that where you can go into the fall unless something changes with, with the governor. So it doesn't have to be by June first. We'd be really tight timelines then. What we're currently projecting is if we can take it to get school board approval in May. And then we still have to get appropriation by the board supervisors, whether it ends up in twenty five or twenty six budgets, we'll have to get appropriations.
So we have a teacher who leaves, they might not get the, the budget, the bonus.
End of school year.
And if we have a brand new teacher, they might get the bonus. Is that, would that happen?
So whoever, we would look at it as whoever is contracted with us at the time. We'll have a cutoff date. So that might be June fifteenth when, alright, whoever's contracted, they've signed a contract, they're returning. We know after June fifteenth that if they've signed a contract, they're locked in with us and they can't then move to another school division.
So it could be a brand new teacher who hasn't been here will get a bonus. And it could be that somebody who was here all year and left will not get the bonus, right?
So if they have not left, yes. Typically in the past, what we've done is, and this is, this is flexible. We, if they haven't started with us, if their start date hasn't been effective yet, then they would not receive.
And then the person leaving, cause their contract goes through June thirtieth, they would still get it.
So my.
Do it as of the date that we.
No.
He says no.
Approve, as of the date we approve it?
So I, I will come to you, if this is the, if this is the case, I will come to you with a recommendation on this in terms of the distribution date, the amount, in terms of what that look like. I will tell you right now, I would recommend that we use it more as a retention bonus for somebody that is going, is with us and is remaining with us. And so we look at that as a, as a benefit of you are a Stafford schools employee and you're coming back next year for us to do that. That's, that would be my initial recommendation if you were to ask me today, but should this be approved, I'll definitely, we'll definitely bring that back.
Wait, so that was seven hundred and fifty dollars?
Seven hundred dollars.
Seven hundred?
Or three fifty.
Or three fifty for part-time.
Wait, per person? That's the, that's the bonus?
Yes.
Yeah.
Before taxes.
It was actually a thousand, but it's only for SOQ. We're, but we are allowed to give it to all.
Which would make it seven fifty or three fifty.
Less.
Seven hundred.
Seven hundred.
I saw a five in there.
Yes, three fifty.
Three fifty.
Three fifty.
Three fifty for part-time, seven hundred for part-time.
That's still.
I know.
It's something, it's better than nothing.
It's a bonus. It's a bonus. Okay, it's just a bonus.
Malcolm quote to go with that.
I do, but that one I will not say out loud on camera.
Yes, you're right.
So kind of wrapping it up and just looking at a timeline, the, the top kind of box there is just looking at the operating budget. So we have our work session tonight. As Dr. Smith mentioned, proposing that we do not hold a special call meeting, we are not ready to adopt the budget next week. And then knowing that the governor will act on May second, we would then hold a work session on May eighth.
I won't be here.
Alright.
My son is graduating. I will be in Colorado.
Oh, congratulations. It's my kid's birthday, but I will be here.
And this is just, we're just looking at dates, so like this, it's really.
Wanted to lay it out, assuming the governor's.
We just wanna make sure we have the timeline.
If the governor approves tomorrow, maybe we revise this. And then, so we would come back at the May thirteenth meeting to adopt the budget. If we know at that, on, if we know at May eighth where we're heading with kind of employee pay, we can get everything kind of ramped up and ready to go. So after that thirteenth, we can roll contracts out very quickly after that. Realizing that the end of May is end of school and, and a lot of our, our ten-month employees will be out of the building after that. But wanna point out that, that thirteenth and sixteenth is before that meals tax public hearing on May twentieth. If we wait until May twentieth and then act after that, we're really looking at pushing our budget adoption and getting contracts out late May, early June, even potentially.
I think what I was gonna share also is, you know, Friday is May second. Once we get that, we, we may not know up until May second whether it's gonna be worst case or best case, right? So we do need a little bit of time. That's how we built in the Thursday. We need a little bit of time to put some things together to be able to ready to bring it to you for that. So that's why we picked the Thursday, but again, we're flexible. I mean, we need you, you have to be there, so that's, that was just our rationale. And picking that, and you already had a board meeting scheduled on the thirteenth.
But you've pretty much done the work on both of them, right? It's not like you're gonna start the work on May third. On which, which one of these best or worst? Are you pretty much, I assume you're, you're working all along.
You're gonna do everything manually, right?
Well, you have that, you won't have the dollar now, the dollar take care.
We won't have a cap tool, but.
When will you get the cap tool? That's, that's.
The cap tool could be weeks after the governor signs. But the good news is, is it's gonna, if it's the biennium budget, we have last year's cap tool that's really gonna be close.
We're gonna make a cap tool, but we'll have less money.
No, I know. Or, or if he goes back to the general assembly budget, unless there's some adjustments to that, it's gonna be really close to the cap tool that was released to the general assembly budget.
Have you heard anything from our legislative team?
I've, I've talked to each member of our legislative team to let them know the, the consequences of kind of each of these situations and ask them to, ask the governor to go ahead and sign the, the budget.
So is there, I mean, just for some of our folks.
I did, I have heard something actually.
What have you heard?
They said you guys need to tell certain other people to call the governor because they're on the same team. They need to play nice. That's what they told me when I, when I checked in with them. They said, don't come to us. We already gave y'all a good budget.
So that's my question, which is, is there a way to?
So who calls the governor?
The people.
I mean, the, us?
The parents. I think you can call anybody who lives here, you can call the governor's office and say, sign the damn budget. Teachers, parents, the people.
They're the right.
So before we wrap up, I actually have a budget question that I'm kind of embarrassed I didn't think about. So I have gone through this year with a little tiny bit less stress in my heart because we had that emergency funds for emergency repairs and stuff.
Contingency?
Yes, that they put into an account for us at the last budget. I have not heard conversation about that existing moving forward. I don't know if there's a plan for them to allow us to continue to operate in that way, even if there isn't a separate like kind of piggy bank for it. So if it isn't something that has been talked about on their side already, then I feel like, like, I don't, I would love to know kind of where we are and how much we spent, just because, not, I mean, that's the thing with emergencies, you can't predict them or how big they're gonna be or how little they're gonna be, but to kind of get a sense of.
We use that money again.
Yeah, we use.
So I can share, the county minister, my county administrator and I have had several conversations about that. I told him about how helpful it was and beneficial to us, as I think it was beneficial to them as well, that, in terms of that. And he agreed and we talked through that. We did talk about, that's a kind of a separate process because it came out of their end of year funds in terms of some of that. And so we've had conversations around that, but also shared that was a separate process. We wanted to get through the budget first and then come back to that. So I'll continue to, to have a conversation with him about that and talk more about how we can.
How much was that?
Cause last year, last year it was in, it was put in with the whole package.
It was.
Right, because they came up with that. But also.
We've all reached out of contingency, haven't we, Chris?
As a response to the budget.
I mean, with, with leasing air budget, we've always.
We've had our own capital reserve fund that's held on their, in their fund balance. Last year was the first year they set aside a significant amount of funds and say, let us, just, it's set aside, come to us if you need it.
So obviously, they, you know, their year-end funds, they don't need to like re-appropriate back to themselves, but maybe they do, like, do their account, could they could, because they're who they are and their board is, can that money just sit there in perpetuity or do they have to like roll it back in and then redistribute it out? Do you know what I mean? Like, we would have to give back, carry over funds and ask her back.
They don't have to have it.
So they could technically let that money ride and, okay.
They carry over their fund.
Um, when it comes to our school board work session on the eighth, after we know what, you know, the governor's deadline, my, my only question, or I'm just asking that we maybe make our work session as early as we can make it and we have to stay until we're done. Because I think, you know, potentially it can be very contentious with us, you know, not that we're not nice people, you know what I'm saying, just it might take time.
I would just say though that we already have a partnership appreciation that night from five to six.
I thought partner, oh yeah.
Oh, I didn't realize.
On the eighth.
I have it on my calendar.
I have it on my calendar.
I don't have my calendar in front of me.
Yeah, I know, that might, that might be the one I'm not gonna.
And, and we didn't poll the, and Dr. Smith, we didn't poll the board, this was really.
Yeah.
I know, I know. I, I'm just saying, as we're discussing availability, I just, and she said early, this is sorry.
Yeah. If.
I would like to see if there's a date that all the board members can be here. Dr. Chase is in.
Yeah.
You're going the sixth through.
I mean, I think, I think we have.
Right.
The what?
Through the.
With the tenth?
Through the.
What, the eleventh?
Yeah, the.
Eleventh, the latter day?
The eleventh or twelfth.
Mother's Day is in.
I'm, we're driving back, so maybe we get the eleventh, maybe we get back to twelfth.
Oh, drive.
The eleventh, yeah, the eleventh is Sunday. No, oh, yeah, it is.
Oh, so the twelfth.
The thirteenth is Tuesday.
Twelfth will be Monday.
Monday. I just don't know what time I'll get back. I don't, you know.
That's a lot, that's a big conversation to have before the thirteenth.
You're dropping from Colorado.
And one day.
It is a big conversation to get done in one twenty-four hours, like, so yeah.
To get his stuff.
His stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
I did that from Chicago and Florida and.
Yeah. I know. San Francisco.
So the eighth is not happening, right? Is that, is that, was my, did I hear that?
I'm just saying, it, we have something from five to six, so.
Yeah, but Dr. Chase isn't available that day.
Yeah, but I, I'm just, just marking it as that we committed ourselves publicly.
Well, I mean, I mean, could we, could we meet on the thirteenth and then adopt on the Wednesday?
I mean, the other alternative is to, to meet earlier and be optimistic and, and meet and talk about, if the best case scenario is approved, this is where we're gonna go. Because I, if it's not the best case, we're gonna need a whole lot more than a long marathon session. But I mean, that's, is that not a possibility?
So what was in that last suggestion?
We're just waiting for the date to come where we are.
She's saying, she's saying we could meet, we could meet earlier, before May second or before, yeah, before May second.
Before May second. Before May second.
And like we could meet Tuesday, April twenty-second and talk about the best case scenario.
Right. If, if, if we have the best, cause it's either gonna be the best or the worst, right?
I, I know, so it works. So hold on, I know, but at the end of the day, that's, to me, that's very confusing. That's a lot of ifs for the public to have to handle. It's a deal. That's a lot of hypotheticals and I don't think that's fair. I, we need, we need an answer.
So why don't we just do like our, just move our regular meeting to the twentieth so that we can do all the work that we need to do on the thirteenth? So why don't we just do like our, just move our regular meeting to the twentieth so that we can do all the work that we need to do on the thirteenth?
Cause they wanna get the contract.
So we have talked about not having a meeting at the, that the twentieth is when they're talk, they're talking about the meals tax. Like, do we wanna meet at the same time they're doing that?
No.
We could do that Monday.
See, we're talking about the hypothetical.
We could do that Monday, the ninth.
And they're still hypothetical, but the three point one million is, is not gonna make or break the budget.
The meal taxes have been hypothetical.
It's a huge, it's a big difference between the five, I mean, and the eight point one though.
I would say let's assume it and then if we have to amend it, we do that.
I'm okay, but we're saying, we don't wanna assume one thing, but we'll assume something else.
No assumption.
Yes.
Now, I'm not, I'm not willing to, to me before this happens.
Let's pull the board and we could also. Do you wanna meet on, we can meet on Friday, May second.
Oh, before the mail tax, yeah.
I'm in Boston.
When, when does he have to pull the plug, right?
I'm in, I'm, I'm in Boston.
When?
Oh, you are?
May second.
We can agree not to meet on Tuesday. We can, I mean, like Maureen said, if you'd like us to pull the board, we can do that for other dates or however you like.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that if we do something the thirteenth and then the nineteenth, we can work on the thirteenth.
So we are, in agreement, we're not gonna meet this coming Tuesday, the twenty-second.
And we're not meeting on the eighth.
So everybody take it off your calendar.
And not the eighth.
And not, we won't, we'll change the eighth. We won't put the eighth on there. Really, anything after that would, you know, yeah, we'll wait for any other, any other board meeting dates.
So are we gonna get any background information about, you know, a dollar figure with things, you know, that, what are our choices? Kind of like a menu. You know, you, this is what, this is how much you have and how much is actually discretionary? And maybe none. I mean, what do we have to cut? If it's what we have to cut, then we have to know what are the discretionary things that we've approved. Because I don't wanna come in here and just. Because I don't want to come in here and just start looking at a list and and saying, hmm, you know, with seven of us doing that, I can't imagine we're going to be efficient, be in, all in one night.
Be like redistricting.
So. The way that that I was envisioning is that once we get a number, I'll come, we're going to develop a recommendation to share with you. We will be offering to meet one-on-one, two-by-two to talk through some of those. And then if you have other ideas that, the things you'd like us to bring, you'd like us to cross out, we have to do that. And we'll bring everything that we have in terms of that.
And and I, I like. We use that week between the second and the eighth to do that. And then by the, we should be able to, we met on the twelfth, we should actually be able to pull it together.
Monday, the twelfth, she's not guaranteed to be here.
Oh, that's right.
It really does need to be seven of us.
I want a recommendation, but I also want to know what's the cost, the recommendation by cost as well as what's not in there by cost in case we want to substitute.
And, yes, and I just think there's, there's a lot of things. And so I don't know that we're going to be able to provide everything, but if there's things that you have to.
But how do I, how can I evaluate a recommendation if I don't know what's not there? You know what I mean? And in terms of.
I just, I just think the cuts, the cuts could be so significant. I mean, there's things, you know, for example.
I'm talking about the best case. I'm still, I'm still in the.
Oh, you're talking about best case. Oh, you're talking about best case. Okay.
The worst case, we're going to need a lot more than one day.
Yeah, like start maybe start at four o'clock that day, right?
I think.
Yeah.
Can we start?
I was thinking you were talking about the worst case.
No, no, I don't.
Can we start the thirteenth at four o'clock? Can we just start earlier?
Would that help and then have that and then just move the work, the work session on it? You know what? I think the thirteenth is too late to wait, but I I obviously we have to because we all have to be here. But would it maybe facilitate us going quicker if we could do one-on-ones with you or two-on-twos?
Or one-on-two?
Come in and so that way, you know, me and you, like, we we got the same information, we understand, and we could maybe go quicker on the thirteenth.
Mr. Palmer, could both be there and we'll do two, one-on, one-on-two, two-by-two, whoever would like.
But also, this is, you're, you're saying the thirteenth is too late because you have to set out the contracts on the sixteenth, but if we have a work session, we would still adopt the budget.
We don't have to do it on the sixteenth. We're going to do it on the six, we're going to get out contracts as soon as we can, so employees know we, you know.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that would be the priority, correct.
So.
Correct. Well, that's what I'm asking. So if we met on the thirteenth.
But it's going to, it's going to be based on your timeline and when you approve the budget, frankly, so.
Well, so then my, would it make sense to come in on, at four on the thirteenth, at least get and just dedicate that work session to the discussion, wouldn't it?
I mean, I think we need to come in as early as we can.
What else do we have, especially if we can be two or make it one?
I mean, I could, Missy, what else do we, we're doing a gender review tomorrow.
That's what.
Two hours, have lunch, come back.
Tuesday, Tuesday gender review.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
What was that saying?
Yeah, that's start today.
So we have items for, I mean, items for, I mean, we can talk about a gender review, but.
Yeah, I agree, so.
It's, it's important enough, like I.
Sarah just mentioned maybe on the thirteenth, coming in at ten AM, start and then.
My calendar's live.
We have governance that day, but.
Well, we can change.
We can do that.
I'm just saying, that's the only other thing.
Everything, this needs to take precedent, as far as I'm concerned, right?
No, oh, yeah, we did.
Yeah.
So if we started at ten AM and just do, go, get, do what we need to do. And if we break for a few hours before our evening meeting, okay. But this way, we have the time.
You guys, you guys have calendars too, I mean.
We'll make it work.
All right.
But we get to put in the time, the questions, the everything, and we don't feel rushed.
I still think the one-on-two, two-on-twos. Along with us doing two-on-twos. Because then we can. We have that whole week after, you know, well, after the eighth, any time after the eighth, two-on-twos to get, Right, we have the time to. you know, as much understanding and we can kind of know where we stand.
Girls have their school that day.
That's a really bad idea because it's May and schoolwork is really hard.
I'm just saying.
But also, we really like to be there when there, when y'all are making decisions about cutting things.
Well, I'm just saying, they should get an excuse absence if they're coming to your school board.
Hey, I agree with that.
We know we do.
We know.
They have an excuse absence. Well, that's exactly it, you know.
When are your exams? They're before that, right? The APs or? I don't have any APs, so, you know, I just have those.
And we're still expected to, we're still going to vote on it on the thirteenth.
Yeah, I, I just have three. I have my math, I have my math, and my science, I've already taken.
That, no, but that way we have, we just take.
So is that the rule of the boards is do it ten o'clock on the thirteenth? Is that what I'm hearing?